Good afternoon, good morning or good evening, depending on where you are in the world. And welcome to this October Halo Community Town Hall session. My name is Matt Green, I'm the Director of the WFA and I'm going to be doing some setup for us, some updates. We've got a fantastic agenda for you today. We'll be hearing from Martin Lawson, who is the Product Leader at Origin. There's some big news from Origin at the moment. We'll be hearing from Sarah Mansfield, she's at Unilever, one of the most present and involved and engaged advertisers, playing a key leadership role for us at Halo and at Origin and Akila as well. We'll be hearing from Andrew Bradford at Kantar all about how panels and virtual ID models and first party data, all of this work together, and I can think of few people as well qualified as Andrew to do that. Just in case you are unaware, Halo, the purpose of Halo, we are an industry consortium facilitated by WFA. Our role here is to convene, to produce research, conduct research and write open source code for a concept for cross media measurement, and it's for the local markets to take that framework and to deploy it into their markets, and that is exactly what is going on at the moment. And as I said, we'll hear more from Martin shortly. Before we get there, yes, a few updates from me. First of all, this, so this is some recent research we've just done, actually. We'll be issuing to all of you who've contributed to this survey. There are about 50 companies or so, many advertisers, but also some agencies and some other people who contributed to this survey. And on this slide here, we're looking at what our major challenges are with cross media measurement. And well, there's a lot on here, and while it's disappointing to see that there are still so many issues with cross media measurement, it is at least reassuring to know that what we are doing is the right thing to be doing. I think that's helpful to know. So let's have a look at some of these challenges. We've got walled gardens, data silos and incomplete data. Maybe that's another expression of media fragmentation, which is the third challenge on this list. So fragmentation, silos. The second one is interesting. You're saying to us that you're missing comparable cross market techniques. Another silo, if you will, but i.e. there are different means for conducting measurement in different markets and there are few, if any, standardised approaches across market. That's a problem. Down further on, four and five are part of two sides of the same coin. I might suggest piecemeal solutions, which only provide a share of what you need, and inconsistent proprietary vendor measurement tools. So we have many valuable vendors out there, but for no fault of their own, I'm sure, are not necessarily providing everything that the market needs right now. Other issues, outcomes, metrics, ad saturation, consumer rejection, privacy issues, lots of big issues out there. So as I say, it's a shame, it's frustrating, of course, that all these issues persist, but at least we know that what we are working on collectively here is the right thing to be working on. And it's also reassuring to see that nearly all respondents to this survey say, and by the way, 82% say this is very important, but nearly all respondents say it is important that there would be an industry-supported consensus-driven approach to cross media reach and frequency measurement. This is the right way to address the challenges that we have just seen. And that is exactly where Halo plays. As an open source, inclusive, standardised and not-for-profit approach, Halo embodies trust, it embodies scalability, regional geographic scalability and credibility as well. This is the point of Halo, is to respond to the challenges that we've just seen on screen. And if it isn't abundantly clear already, we're very excited and extremely proud of the progress that is being made by the local prototypes, these markets, the UK and the US, taking this open source framework and building that out into a full production system in the US and the UK. And clearly, this is solving problems for ISBA as well, as I hope it solves problems for our partners in the States. So we are about to hear more from Martin on the exciting progress being made with Origin as they progress into their all anticipated, well-anticipated beta trials. So that's really exciting indeed. Also, some new milestones being met by A&amp;A. I'm sure all of you would have seen this press release, which went out in June from the A&amp;A. They've stood up a new organisation called Akila, doing similar work to that being done by Origin in the UK. And as it says in the press release, Akila has contracted with Kantar and Accenture. Both of these parties are also working with Origin in the UK. And as I say, we'll be hearing more from Andrew shortly on the important role that Kantar or other panel providers need to do to calibrate with a Halo solution. I'm sure we can get, I hope we can get Akila to come and talk to us in one of these future town halls about the progress that they are making in the States. Right, so last thing from me, I wanted to talk briefly about the work that's been going on at Halo to develop the open source code. So if 2023 was all about code availability, making the first version of the complete code available to markets, 2024 has been more about fit and finish. So refining that code, making it closer to something that can be used in a production system. That's been very much the focus of 24. In 2025, as Origin and Akila get into a launch, we need to focus more on support and scaling. So producing the assets to enable more publishers to join, to make the data more available to more parties. So here are just some of the items that the Halo Consortium wants to work on next year. There are others as well, but these are some of probably the most critical areas where we need to concentrate to support Origin and Akila and hopefully other markets into the future as well. So scale data access, so to grow the number of users. We know that Halo must be able to deliver data in a way that enables the use of existing tools. That is to say, we need to work on APIs and data connections to enable the data to be accessed by multiple parties, be those agencies, advertisers or others. So getting the data into existing systems, data onboarding to grow the amount of data available. Halo will need to reduce the cost and increase the ease of integrations for the media owners that need to integrate with the system. So providing, producing, developing the tools to enable it to make it easier for other publishers and media owners to share data in system. And then computing, compute efficiency and to deliver the value of always-on or continuous reporting, which has been one of the objectives of the WFA's Cross Media Measurement North Star, which all of you will have seen in the past. To enable that, there needs to be more work done to issue reports in an always-on fashion. And we're not there yet, so there's more work that needs to be done to increase the speed of report. So these are just three of the critical projects that the Halo Consortium will be working on in 2025. There are many other items which are being considered to respond to the needs of our stakeholders. And as an inclusive organisation, we want to bring as many people to come and collaborate and help. This is an industry project. I would encourage anyone on this call who is not already involved, so if you want to come and participate, help, support, then you should and you'd be welcome. And there are many other tasks to be done, so just please let us know if you would like to play a role. Right, now, that's all for me for now. I'll come back when we talk to Sarah Mansfield. But Martin, you're on next and I'm going to invite you to share your screen because you've got your slides you'll want to share. So I'll let you take over the screenshot and we look forward to hearing from you about your exciting journey towards launch.
Great stuff. Thank you, Matt. Hello, everybody. Hopefully you can see my screen. You can? Okay, great, excellent. So I'm Martin, I'm from the Origin team here in London. I'm the Product Lead, I've been working on the programme for just over four years. And what we've got for you today is a short update on where the programme is at, a kind of roadmap for the weeks and months ahead and a sense of where the programme is at and where we're headed. So I'll move through that if you have any questions. I'm sure Matt's got a way of making sure we can manage. So I'll crack on and we can take it from there.
So yes, I'll just interject quickly, actually, because I didn't say that earlier on. So thanks for saying that, Martin. Any questions? Please put them in the chat or even the Q&amp;A widget would be good. And hopefully we'll have time at the end of this session to come back.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. So just to give you an overview in terms of our stakeholder base, which continues to grow as market demand for Origin kind of rises with anticipation of a live service in the not-too-distant future. Our stakeholder base is largely made up of advertisers. ISBA members who are actively involved in not only the funding of Origin, but also the inputting of the requirements around the features that we need to build and the user experience that we need to create for them. And their input is really the backbone and driving force behind the programme. They're joined by the media agencies, all of the networks are represented, and a range of different media owners and platforms from a range of different media channels. And regardless of provenance, there's new stakeholders coming on board the programme all the time and lots of conversations in play from advertisers, from agencies and from media owners who want to be closer to the programme and involved with us as we go forward. And the reason behind that really is that we're close to launch. And I'll give you a sense of the programme timeline. With launch due to happen in Q2 next year, that may or may not sound like a long way away, but in terms of the realities of the programme, that's very, very imminent indeed. And a key inflection point along our journey is the surfacing of real campaign data for the first time, which is happening almost live as we speak and as part of the beta trial. And I'll speak to you in more detail about the beta trial today, but fundamentally, it's part of our pathway to launch. Between us and launch, now there's a number of stages, the beta trial, as I said, which has just started and we'll unpack that in a moment. We need to incorporate Origin as a standalone venture within the UK media ecosystem. Currently, we're being incubated out of ISBA, the trade body for advertisers here. And between the beta and the launch, we will have a pilot phase where, to use Matt's words, we'll do the fit and finish on the Origin platform to make sure it's ready for industrialised usage at scale by advertisers and agencies across the UK media ecosystem. But the focus of much of the work that we're doing at the moment and certainly of the attention of our stakeholders around the beta trial, perhaps spend a few minutes thinking about that for a moment. Beta trials have launched, we announced their launch last week and we got amazing coverage and traction in the UK trades on that. And that represents now a material change in the market perception of Origin in that it was a notion and I guess a vision that many people had, and now it's becoming a reality. So across the next month or two, we'll be onboarding all of our stakeholders. So all of our advertisers will be on boarded into the platform and all of their associated media agency teams in a progressive manner over the next few weeks. So next week, I think, we'll be onboarding the next tranche of advertisers, which will take the total up to 10 advertisers and their agency teams using the platform and seeing the platform in earnest. And these are, you know, big advertisers in the UK. They're responsible for over £3 billion of media investment nearly on a combined basis. And the agencies that they're working with represent something around about 85% of UK agency billings as well. So there is this key traction with our stakeholders that are indicative of the market demand and interest in Origin. And in terms of unpacking the beta trial, in terms of what will happen, so 35 or more of our advertiser stakeholders will be involved in them, using the platform in earnest, seeing campaign data there for the first time, and they'll see real de-duplicated reach and frequency data part of their campaign report. As part of the trial, we'll be capturing feedback on the user experience in a number of different ways, and we'll talk about that in a moment. We'll be also progressively releasing new product features into the platform so that the competence of the service and the user experience as well become more sophisticated, more elegant as we progress and we start to deliver as new capabilities that have been in our backlog and are under development currently. And benefits to advertisers for participating and their agency teams are accessing campaign data ahead of the market and getting a perspective on their campaign delivery that historically they haven't been able to have. And then there's a secondary benefit in that, as part of the feedback that we capture in the trials, they'll be able to voice their ambitions for Origin and have a loud and clear presence as we shape future requirements and develop the roadmap for future service development and future requirements. And finally, I'm going to move the little thing that kind of has my face on it so I can see what's in the fourth box, but just to give you a sense of what the beta trial isn't, and it's not the formal launch of Origin. That will happen in the spring, as I've earlier mentioned. Whilst Origin will be servicing real campaign data to our trialists in the next few weeks and months in terms of general availability and all advertisers in the UK, whether they're ISBA members or not, we'll be able to access the platform from the spring. And part of that's because we need to still develop a number of scaled features and we need to still do a lot of fine tuning and test what's possible and what isn't within the platform itself. So we're still in development mode very much, but we're sufficiently down the road to being a reality that now we can surface real data to our trial. In terms of our timeline, I give you a sense of where we're at. So we've integrated TV data, we've also got YouTube and Meta Inventory integrated into the platform. And across the remainder of this year, we will be releasing a number of new features and service elements which allow end users increasingly more granular views on their data. So there'll be introduction of demographic filters into the report and users will be able to look back on the previous 90 days of their campaign inventory. There'll be progressive improvements on the user experience, some of which we've already captured. And I dare say we'll get feedback in the early weeks of the trial, which can fine tune them quite as well. There'll inevitably be improvements on the data of quality that we were able to report back on and we'll launch new services like incremental reach report and developing a new user journeys through the platform, which are more orientated towards the campaign structure rather than kind of immediate things. As we move towards next year, then we'll improve the search functionality for campaign elements within the system and ultimately get to a point where we can offer demographic slicing, more deeper, richer functionality within the server. And we hope early in the new year, if not before, to onboard TikTok inventory into the platform as well, and that will be part of the beta trial. And shortly thereafter, we hope to have Amazon inventory. Those integrations are alive and underway as we speak. In terms of how we're going to capture feedback from end users, we're going to do those in three main ways. The first one is, I guess, autonomous, self-guided testing from our users. And I guess what underpins that is Origin is in essence a very easy-to-use intuitive platform. To my mind, it's a bit like when you get a new smartphone, there's a whole load of functionality embedded into the device, but actually you can figure it out for yourself. You don't need to have to read a user manual. It's pretty intuitive in terms of how you can get it to do the things you want. And those sorts of principles are baked into the design of Origin as well. And that means our end users, they will get some formal induction from us. They'll have as much support from us as they need and want. But fundamentally, they'll be free to use the system as much as they want to, to commission the runs they want to. And as part of that, we'll be drip-feeding them structured tests that they can do for themselves. And as part of that, we'll be able to capture some of the feedback that we need to do. We'll also be doing some live tests with our end users whereby we sit with them in a more structured environment and ask them to perform tasks and get them to feedback on that task and things like that. So we can share those learning moments with them and get the feedback from them in the moment as we can see what exactly they're trying to do and any improvements that they can suggest as they go on that process. And the third element is where we run some things we call desirability studies, which is where we take a cohort of our trialists and have a separate session with them and get them to unpack a particular theme of the Origin service design or capability and get some deep and rich feedback on, A, what their ambitions are for that particular capability and what they perceive the current Origin functionality to be and how we could make it better. And we've got a roadmap in place for all the major subject matters, themes that we want to explore in desirability studies. And as we onboard more and more stakeholders, we'll be progressively rolling those studies out with our cohort to get the deep and meaningful feedback we need. So you may detect from my voice and certainly from the coverage in the trade press, if you've seen any of it, but there's real excitement around Origin at the moment. Where it feels like we've moved into a definitively new chapter where Origin is much sharper in its focus and much more tangible to end users. And from here on in, it can only grow in terms of scope and scale of Origin as we move. So the final slide for me is just to give you a sense of what our launch of Origin will represent. We'll be reporting back in a cross-media context on linear TV, on digital video and digital display inventory in the UK marketplace. Our estimates suggest that that's about 71% of UK ad spend. So that we'll be measuring more than two-thirds of the market when we launch. But we won't stop there. We know that we need to have a fully complete view of video. So bringing in things like CTV, B-VOD, S-VOD, et cetera, and hopefully we'll be able to provide news and updates on that very shortly. And secondly, we need to diversify our channel mix completely. So bringing in other channels, whether that's radio, out-of-home, print, direct mail, et cetera, et cetera, to form as fully formed and comprehensive cross-media measurement service possible. And so we hope in the months and years after launch to get to as close to 100% market spend coverage possible, but certainly well north of that. So for end users, they have a genuine sense of Origin meeting those WFA North Star principles about offering comprehensive cross-media measurement over a range of different media. So that's all the slides you've got for me, but if you have any questions, very happy to field those.
That was excellent, Martin. Yeah, thank you very much. I enjoyed that very much indeed. And there have been some questions, so you can see them yourself in the Q&amp;A. So we've got one here, will there be preferred benefits for the inaugural advertisers participating? Prices, features?
I think that's a really good question. And the reflex answer to that, it will be, yeah. The specifics to how they manifest themselves, I think, is yet to be determined. But I think there's probably a number of different levers that we can pull on to give our patient, our long-suffering stakeholders, their just rewards for their commitment. And some of those could be commercial, some of those could be around preferential access data, things like that. But fundamentally, we are extraordinarily grateful to the support and input that we've had from our stakeholders over the last few years. And we would like very much to be able to reward them for their commitment over those years with benefits that are meaningful for them. And I guess that's part of a conversation with them, it's actually, how can we help you in the best in terms of the benefits in Origin? Financial or service access, I think, are probably the two biggest levers we can think of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The next question, I think you've answered, really. Does TV mean CTV or linear TV as well? You're certainly linear TV, aren't you, in your beta trials?
Yeah, so it starts with linear TV, but fundamentally, the shape of the TV or video landscape in the UK has evolved in the years that we've been developing Origin, almost running away from it in many ways. So we know that advertisers have a very clear ambition to get a fully formed view of video. So linear when we launch and then folding in streamers, B-VOD and CTV as quickly as we can.
Yeah. And perhaps you could just remind us about the metrics that are being used in the Origin platform?
Yeah, good question. So fundamentally, we want to empower end users to design the measurements to meet the questions that they have to resolve. So Origin is a neutral service and we want to empower end users to build the measurements they want to. And some of that means specifying the viewability of any video, or sorry, of any digital inventory. So how much of it is viewable on screen? And more specifically for video, it's around what the completion status was of the inventory that we want to have measured. Was it all impressions get measured? Was it some that meet a partial completion threshold? Is that an MRC two-second or an advertiser-specific percent threshold, for example? Or is it only the 100% fully viewed impressions count? And we leave the decision to the end user to specify the run so that they get to see the report and the data they want to see.
Absolutely. Excellent stuff. Martin, there are other questions and I'll leave you to respond to those. You can type an answer, but we must move on. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Excellent stuff. Right, Sarah Mansfield, thank you very much. I've got this slide here, which has got a little bit of, I pulled this from the web, I hope you feel it, accurately reflects who you are and what you're doing in the industry. But anyway, actually, my first question was going to be a bit about, can you, you know, just, I haven't got long for this, but have you just give us a bit of background about the roles that you fulfil for Unilever? Just be interesting to hear a little bit about those roles briefly.
Hi all, really super excited to be here today and super excited to be part of the Origin Beta Trial and also part of the Halo team as well, so on what is just a fabulous project. So how and why are we involved in this project? So and what's my role in it? As you can see, I'm one of the global VPs for media. So I sit centrally in the middle of the organisation. And part of my responsibility is about supporting all of the brands and all the media teams and the agencies in every market around the world with planning frameworks, principles and guidance on how to develop best-in-class media plans. And that includes global measurements. So and as part of that, we get asked all the time, okay, all right, well, how are we performing versus other markets? You know, how can we really understand how our advertising is performing cross channels? And without having a holistic view of cross-media measurement through one consistent KPI, it's super, super difficult to do that, as you know.
Got it, got it. So you relate to the challenges that we saw on screen earlier.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My loss, fragmentation.
I could have said them better myself, to be honest, you know, in terms of what the key challenges are. You know, so many walled gardens and even more, I think, by the day. And they all have, I mean, probably decent measurement solutions when you look at them in isolation. And they all say, yeah, we're the best at reaching 18 to 30-year-olds, you know, sort of. And we get the best reach out of any platform. Well, go, well, how do we know that? You know, so and how do we know that's for sure? So you've got your measurement stats, you know, and other platforms got their own measurement stats. How do we bring all this together to really understand what is truly going on and how we really build unique reach and frequency in the best possible way that's going to drive the best outcomes throughout, right?
So you wouldn't be here if you didn't feel this way, but you feel that Halo and the productionised expressions of Halo, Origin and Akila can help to address these issues?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah, exactly. I wouldn't be here today, but I mean, I could go on about what it's actually solving for. I mean, there are solutions out there today, but they're problematic, not deterministic. And they look at one moment in time as well. So you could look at cross-media measurement for a particular campaign, but none of it is always on and it's always post-mortem, not pre-mortem. So how can you plan against this to really to drive and deliver those best outcomes and have that 360 feet back loop in order to do that? And Halo and Origin and Akila help solve for that in a wholly transparent manner as well. You know, agencies obviously have their planning tools and say, well, we've got solutions to these already, but they're black. And, you know, it's very much an art, not a science in terms of how we get to those conclusions at the moment and how we plan against them. And who knows if they're right and wrong? So Halo and Akila and Origin are really helping to solve for that.
And describe to us the roles you're playing with Origin. You're very actively involved in the Origin steering groups. I know you're involved in the Halo Steering Committee because I run that and you come and sit there and you help us and support us and steer us. And that's a bit what you're doing for Origin and if you're involved in Akila, I'm sure you are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So for Origin, I sit on their steering committee. So the role of that steering committee really is to set the direction of travel and agree to set the direction of travel, but it's also to help to overcome barriers and blockers as well, you know, in that position. So as an advertiser, I quite often get asked by the platforms, you know, could you spend 15 minutes of your time talking to X or Y within our product team? Just to really champion it, because it costs so much money to invest in this programme behalf of the platforms. You know, and obviously they're talking to us and we're saying, we need this. You know, it's one of the biggest priorities that we have. But when they go into their businesses, you're trying to justify, you know, sort of big, big checks that they need to write. That's super, super difficult. So one of the things I do is, you know, I champion Origin, WFA, Halo, Akila, because all of these are global platforms that we're talking about here. And giving the reason and the case for why this is a real big priority and reassuring them that advertisers are behind it. So, you know, and I have regular check-ins with some of the platforms, you know, trying to do that very thing. So and then there are other things, you know, I mean, there's so many bumps and hurdles in the road in terms of just trying to, I don't know, maybe be a third-party voice of reason sometimes. I don't know, Martin, I can see Martin there. I don't know whether he agrees, sometimes maybe I'm helpful, sometimes I'm not, I don't know. But I try my best. So, you know, to try and bring some sort of conclusion, some sort of, you know, sort of reason to bear and just find a route forward, what might be some of the challenges we have. And just try, I don't know, and trust by ever positive, I think, you know, we can do this. Perseverance will pay off, and I think we're finally seeing that. I mean, I look back through my notes, 2019.
That's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just like, that's five years ago. I mean, that is how long it's taken to get to where we are. I mean, my God, well, we've got a robust solution, you know, it's just, it's bulletproof. But and as you said earlier, I mean, the fact's been going so long and everybody still thinks it's the most, you know, more important industry sort of challenge that we have to overcome. And, you know, I think it's just testament to how much it's still needed and how relevant this solution really is for the problems and challenges that we see today. But yeah, so hence the reason why I'm super excited, everybody else is about finally getting to beta on this. And we've always had a really good, solid advertiser support. But as the Origin team will say, I mean, it's been brought new people into ISBA, the UK trade body, just to be a part of this programme and be a part of this launch programme. And that's how excited advertisers are about this. And it's not just excitement for the sake of it, because we truly believe it's going to drive better outcomes. And I've been on record for a long time now and saying if it doesn't drive at least 10% better improvement in our outcomes as a consequence of this, I mean, it's no point in getting out of bed. And I think it'll be a lot more than that when we finally come to prove it out, so.
Right, yeah, 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 that's a really interesting.
But you talked to Akila as well, so obviously I kind of do a global role. So I support my global colleagues. I have equivalents in the US who are very much more involved in that, but I do talk regularly to my Akila colleagues as well. And we're doing a lot of transference as well in terms of sharing as well across the two projects, because this is not about getting one over the line, it's about getting the UK and the US over the line. So therefore, the sharing of best practice as well between one and what's working and what's not, you know, so that we're not making the same mistakes twice is super important.
Absolutely, yeah. That was really interesting. I mean, yeah, I think to come back to a couple of things, you said you've been extremely effective in many areas. So I think your input has always been extremely valuable. I was really interested to hear you say about the work you've done interfacing with platforms and other actors. And I guess that's equally important with your agencies, of which there was an announcement about your Global Media Review appointment this week, wasn't there? You're now working, if not all, most of the holding companies. And it's an important And it's, it's an important role for you to talk to them, isn't it? Because they will often be the users of these systems. And that is why we're working on the API design, because this is the most practical way for agencies to get this data into their workflow. But I guess there's some assurances that you need to offer to these organisations, because they've built up their own systems and now we're asking them to start using different solutions as well.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You know, yes, I missed that point. But yeah, I mean, I have, you know, had many conversations, have, as have a lot of other advertisers as well, with their agencies reinforcing how important it is that, you know, we have their support behind these solutions. Because, you know, but big global advertisers like us, most advertisers, you know, we, we're not the people who are hands on keyboards, who are planning our activity every day, it's the agencies that are. So actually, yeah, I know we're testing a, you know, an advertiser interface into Origin. And yes, we, you know, I'm sure we will, you know, sort of use the platform and, but we're more likely to use the API feeds as are the agencies. So into their planning platforms and integrating it into their tools. But, you know, as I said earlier, you know, one of the pushbacks we got originally was, well, you know, we have our planning tools, you know, well, yeah, okay, but they're untransparent, you know, they're, you know, they're not built on, you know, they're built on models, they're not built on real outcomes, you know, or real, you know, census data that's going into these, these, these tools. So, you know, we need better, you know, we need better transparency that actually the outcomes that they're coming to are actually the right ones. And, you know, Origin and Halo and Akila can help you do that. So it's been super important in that and saying, yes, you know, we're supportive, you know, ultimately, are we going to pay for it? Yes, we'll pay for it, you know, it's just, please just get behind it. So actually having them on board is like really, really important because actually, and you need them as, you know, sort of testing and beta testing the user interface, which they are as well. I know, you know, our agents and, you know, helping and supporting that and giving really good back.
Fantastic. Well, my last question is, what, what do you want to happen next? What's, how do you see these, briefly, how do you see these initiatives unfolding into the future? What's the, how would you like, what's the direction travel? What, what, what's your?
If we get over the line of launch, that would be a good start.
That's a good start. What's next?
In the US and the UK. So, yeah, you know, and, and then, I mean, obviously, I mean, it's twofold. I mean, sitting in a global role, one of the exciting things about this, and I think, you know, for a global business, is that, you know, we can now roll this out across other markets. And I know there's a whole, you know, list of markets lining up at the door who want to actually launch this now. So, and I think, you know, once we've got the blueprint and the model, hopefully, it should be reasonably easy for, you know, other markets to take it and lift and drop it. So, and then we start to have consistent metrics that we can use across all markets. So, yeah, that would be the first one. And then secondly, yeah, I'm expanding out across more platforms as well. So not just in the digital space, I know, you know, we're also looking at radio as well. You know, we're doing, we're also looking at direct mail and how we could integrate that in as well into this tool. I mean, there are no limits, once you've got the framework there, you know, and you can start then applying equivalence and consistence metrics that you can basically compare again. So, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I think that's, that's ultimately the starting point and we want to link it to outcomes. So, you know, reach and frequency is the starting and the building block, you know, it's the core building block for any, you know, media planning. But when you sort of start linking it to outcomes and then be able to take the IPIs, put them into MMM tools or whatever it might be, then, you know, you really are cooking on gas.
Then you're cooking with gas, for sure. Yeah, exactly. That was fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. Really enjoyed that. I'm going to move on. There may be questions coming in for you. And if there is time, we can circle back on that. But I do want to ensure we have enough time for Andrew Bradford, because, you know, people will be fascinated to hear from you, Andrew, I think, as the, one of the world's foremost authorities on panels, I would say, and science, data science. So we are all ears now. You are working with Origin and you are working with Akila as well. So tell us a little bit about how panels, vid models, first party data and privacy technologies are all working together. And then tell us a bit about how this is all needed to support the deployment of Halo, how it's needed for Origin and it's needed for Akila.
Thanks, Matt. Well, I don't know if I'd describe myself as an expert on panels. There's a very long list of people that help make me look good, not least of which we've got people like Francis on the call, who could wax lyrical on the panel build. But I'm going to take a little bit through, you know, some of these issues around the vid models, first party data, how it all gets linked together. Or put another way, what the hell does Kantar Media do all day? That's another equally useful title. So the way I think about the architecture of this solution is that it's in two phases. And the first one is that which Kantar is largely responsible for, and that's what I refer to as the training phase. And in this phase, we're building a panel, we're building a single source panel with fully metered, fully with full compliance, highly managed sample, nat rep. We're going to onboard some of those event data providers. In other words, we're going to integrate them with the panel. And we'll do that via something called a panel exchange. And the panel exchange is nothing more than a conduit for census level campaign data being joined with our panelist data. And that data processed and refined, and ultimately, we only use kind of one perfectly formed thing, which is a vid model. We do so for each EDP. Probably worth thinking about a vid model as a trained probability model. It's like a decision tree. And so, and we use the panel insights in terms of duplication estimates and so forth to help train that vid. And then what happens then is a little bit of a handshake. And hopefully, Matt, great, thank you, you can put me on to the next important phase of the architecture, which is the measurement phase. And this is where the vids are actually implemented. And so we will hand over a vid for, a specific vid for each EDP over to each EDP. And they will run that vid over their internal campaign data in something called a vid labelling pipeline. The result of that ultimately is an output from the EDP that is sent into the, into a central location called the MPC. Now, the MPC is a, is something called a multi-party computation environment. And that's really a way of integrating the reach and frequency curves, the private sketches from the EDPs into a deduplicated form that can be queried by the end user. The MPC itself is a privacy enhancing technology. It's one of the, the big pieces of work that Halo has delivered to this system and is a, is a brilliant way of maintaining privacy of all of the users within the infrastructure. And then on the backend, we have all of the reporting. And I think that, Martin, I think I'm right in saying that, you know, initially, we start with an interface and then eventually we see APIs coming in to enable users to access the queries directly. So that's a quick snapshot of the, the entire project end to end and the piece that Kantar Media takes on on behalf of Akila and Origin. Next slide, please, Matt. So it's important to remember that at the heart of this, we have people powered measurement. We have a single source panel that we're building in both markets. And that single source panel has a number of facets to it. It's a nationally representative sample. It's highly managed, which is probably one of the most important features of a good quality measurement sample. Obviously, we have comprehensive consent management, both at a household and individual level, that's critically important. And we also have both person and household level data, because that's critically important to reconcile the relationship deterministically between the household and the people. And of course, we have currency grade data collection in the form of our meters, which enables us also to further deduplicate at a device level. So we've got the three levels of relationship that we need to deal with. And that gives us a number of great things. Total population enumeration and estimation, because the vid model itself, very sensitive to total population estimates, because it is in itself, when we produce the vid model for EDPs, they will contain within it sixty million in the UK, three hundred and sixty million in the US vids IDs for members of the population. We've got real demographics and that's critically where we're actually going to compare those real demographics to the data coming in from the EDPs. Fully privacy compliant, as you'd expect, deterministic duplication from household to device to person. And of course, the ability to individualise and deal with co-viewing pieces. So that panel then powers a number of follow-on processes, if you could, Matt. It's the conduit for the panel exchange where we'll get a whole corpus of historical campaign data in from the EDPs that is then matched into the panelists. And so we get viewing files that show a respondent level database initially with all of the views for a campaign connected to it. The panel exchange is actually relatively straightforward. The real trick here actually is the post-exchange EDP methodology, which I'm going to cover off in the next slide. And that really is around how we process and refine the data. So we take care of things like sample weighting, individualisation before we then finally produce the vid model for each EDP. Okay, so the panel exchange is reasonably well known and understood. And we've got those panel exchanges up and running now, both double blind and clean room. One of the, I think, one of the innovations we've seen of this project is the, the continual development and innovation in the service. But I want us to spare a moment just to think about what a company like Kantar Media has to do once we've got the data. Because it's the post-exchange data refinement methodology that really relies heavily on a panel. So let's take one example. We might get device level data in from one EDP. So what we have to do there is deduplicate and individualise the multiple users for that shared device. We also have to also live make sure that we've got the correct consent collected for both of those users before we then assign the impressions and the demographics to them. So that's, that's one thing that we have to do. Let's think about another EDP scenario too. In this case, we might have an EDP who has a much more one-to-one relationship with a user. It might be an EDP that is much more focused on from a mobile device, for instance. In that case, it's slightly straight, more straightforward. Rather than a many-to-one relationship, we have a one-to-one relationship between those users and slightly easier individualisation process in that post-exchange methodology. But then let's look at scenario three. Now, in scenario three, we might have a, we might have a SVOD player, a streamer. Now, in that case, we may be getting data in at a household or account level. And the account impressions may be demographically assigned to the account holder. But we also know that, of course, there are multiple viewers within the household who are viewing, who will not share those demographics. And so one of the key parts for us here is to go through that viewing data and assign the viewing data and the viewing behaviours to other members of the household and assign demographics to the various impressions that we assign to those users. We also usually or sometimes have to go a step further. What if in a household for an SVOD player, could be a Netflix, an Amazon Prime, a Hulu, whatever it is, what if there is a second child, maybe at university, maybe they're accessing the household account, but they're not part of the household panel? So we also have to work out how we exclude the viewing behaviours and the impressions assigned to that person and exclude them before we commence the individualisation and sample weighting process. Now, all of these things are, we need two key components. The first one is we need respondent level data, we need a single source panel, we need people powered measurement. And the second thing is we need some really good data scientists who understand and work in the media measurement world as they work with currencies globally. And that's what we do. So this is actually not something that's talked about very much, actually, but it's one of the most important parts of the process that Kantar Media undertakes for both Akila and Origin. So next slide, please, Matt. So just a quick note on the virtual ID model. There's a fantastic paper by R S N B on the vid model, which I would encourage anyone to have a read through. In my mind, the vid model has two broad purposes. The first one is demographic correction, not assignment, but correction. So the, 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 the vid model is designed to make corrections to assignments of demographics that the EDPs themselves have made to an impression internally. And that's all part of this comparison that we've made within the training phase between the actual demographics in the panel and the demographics we're seeing through, coming through in the historic set of data in the panel exchange from the EDPs. And we can build up a demographic correction table for that. The second purpose of the vid model is in reach estimation. And in the jargon of the project, we often talk about private sketches. And in many ways, it's worthwhile probably summarising that as a reach and frequency curve. And so that's what the vid model is doing for the project. And, you know, it's important just to remember, the vid model itself is trained by the panel. It's actually, if you can move on one notch, Matt, please, thank you. It's actually a decision tree with a number of probabilities and parameters on the end of each node of the tree. And it will be specific to each EDP. We may have some EDPs that are a hundred percent logged in. We may have some other EDPs that have a partial amount of logged in activity and some non-logged in activity as well. And so we have to produce those EDPs that fit the data, the underlying data structure of those EDPs, whether they are a streamer like Disney Plus or Amazon Prime or Hulu, whether they're a Google and Amazon or TikTok. And it's produced from this integration of a corpus of historical campaigns that we receive from the EDPs through the panel exchange, then allowing us to compare that data with the actual data we're seeing for those impressions in the panel. And I think one of the things that always strikes me about this project is that, you know, this is a collaboration between global and local. So if you look at the, if you look carefully at the Halo, original Halo vid model, you will see there's some differences between that and the vid model being used by Origin. And that's part of the process of localisation. Any market has the ability to retain and use the original Halo code, or if they choose, they can make some adaptations along with the vid model of choice. And what we've done with Origin and what we're doing with Akila is an adapted version of the vid model that probably makes a little bit better use of the deterministic data coming in from that single source panel. So I think that was pretty much it for me. I hope that was reasonably clear.
It truly was. It was, it was excellent. Thank you very much indeed. We've got a few minutes left. So if there are questions that come in for Sarah or Andrew, this is the time to ask. I will ask one for you, to you, Andrew. You said that the vid model is actually a demographic, a means of correcting demos rather than assigning them. Correcting them when the publisher, media owner, when that, their assignments might need correction. What if there are no demographic assignments made by the publisher? They have no information. How does that, how does that work?
Well, that's something that we'll have to produce a different methodology for as, as the, as the moment arrives. It does depend on the data structure of the EDP. It depends on whether we can draft in data from the panel. So I think that that would define or be defined by the individual circumstances of an EDP. But fundamentally, the vid model is designed to assign rather, sorry, to correct rather than assign. Of course, we have a number of methodologies globally where we do the actual assignment for a number of currencies around the world. So no reason why one of those approaches couldn't be deployed if necessary. But we haven't come up against that issue as yet, but we're, we're ready for it if it does.
Okay. I think you can explain this in a way, a question here. I thought one vid model per market, not per EDP. Can you explain?
Yeah, so it is one vid model per EDP. And that's because each EDP has an underlying data structure that we need to produce the vid model for. So we, we, we need to produce as many EDP, as many vid models as there are EDPs. There may be some variations in that as we go forward with, as we adapt. It's important to remember, and I think, you know, the industry sometimes misses the fact, this is not an operational deployment. This is a development deployment. And what I mean by that is that we're working in a very agile way and we're developing all the time whilst we're deploying at the same time. And there's a certain amount of localisation that's required and that requires adaptation as well. So as we go forward, there will be some changes to the way that we do things. It may be that with certain aggregator EDPs in the future, we may have one consistent vid model for a, for a set of aggregated EDPs. But as we move forward, there'll be, there'll be a vid for each EDP. That also works well because actually from market to market, the actual vid structure for most of those EDPs is consistent as well. So there's a bit of copy and pasting, shifting and lifting that can happen between markets.
Got it. And Sarah, a question for you. How do you inform slash support your local colleagues? Unilever is, there's lots of media, lots of media managers, lots of marketers around the world. How do you inform and support your local colleagues outside of the US and the UK to promote local solutions? And I guess, how are you advocating for Halo based solutions if you are outside of the US and the UK?
So, I mean, we're quite a tight community of, you know, specialists within Unilever. So, you know, do regularly have conversations with our colleagues, you know, in other markets who say, hey, you know, and give them updates on how Origin's progressing and Akila, and help and support them and give them guidance on, you know, quite often, you know, the best, best way to move forwards. And quite often, they're probably sitting on their equivalent of their trade body in their market who are all scratching their heads thinking, how do we go forward with this? You know, so try and share as much information as we possibly can and help and guidance, you know, to, to keep, keep the, keep the boat moving forward.
Exactly. Brilliant. That's very helpful. Thank you very much, Sarah, Andrew, Martin. That was a very informative session indeed. The questions are still rolling in, but we are out of time. If you on the call would like to email us with questions, we will endeavour to answer those and send it back out to all respondents. We'll also distribute this recording and we'll distribute the deck as well. Thanks again for our speak, to our speakers. Thanks again to everyone who participated. I hope. Thanks again for our speak, to our speakers. Thanks again to everyone who participated. I hope you found it useful. We'll be back again in two months' time, so early December for our next video town. But for now, that's all and have a wonderful afternoon, evening ahead. Thanks again.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, everybody.